Thank you. Welcome to the Wednesday, April tenth, uh, meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Liberty Lake. Would we please have a low call?
Joe Mann.
Here.
Tom Salberg.
Here.
Jim Bunker.
Here.
DG Garcia.
Here.
Charlie.
I'm Jim.
Here.
Dale Robbins. Phil Foyer.
Here.
Gene Hueschel.
Here.
And Troy Molenix.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to number three, general business. Look at the agenda. Any additions or changes to the agenda? Have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Also approval of minutes for March the thirteenth. Any changes or anything on that? Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Jinks and seconded by Commissioner Bunker. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The workshop Spokane Transit Authority Strategic Plan. We have a speaker, Brian Jennings, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Jennings. I'm the Deputy Director for Community Development with Spokane Transit Authority. Decided to see if I could come out here today. We're visiting all the planning commissions within the region, giving updates on our strategic plan that we're updating. It's called Connect 2035. You may recall in twenty sixteen, twenty twenty five, or sorry, twenty fifteen, we adopted our previous STA moving forward plan. So we're nearing the end of that and in the process right now of updating it for the next decade, which will cover what investments, what service, what capital investments we'll be making. So I have a few slides here. I'll go over kind of where we've been with the planning process to date and what's coming next. Because we're entering into the part of it that's going to start defining kind of what the initiatives are going to be for the next decade. So with that, let's go ahead. Next slide. So this is the second phase we're in right now. The first phase we completed in December of twenty twenty two. We did a good amount of public input. We updated our agency mission and vision. The vision was revised to now, you'll see it on the next slide, it says connecting everyone to opportunity. We did develop three goals as a result of that, along with some strategies and some headline performance measures. Go ahead. So there's the vision, connecting everyone to opportunity. That's what we're moving, moving forward with. What we heard with the public output at the time was people want to see buses that come more frequently to more places. They want to expand the hours that are serviced more, much more than we currently do. They also was a, was a component of STA being seen as sustainability and climate change. So that's another aspect that we heard from the community. Next slide. The three goals. Goal one, elevate the customer experience. Goal two, lead and collaborate with community partners. That's why we're here today. This is our collaboration. This is our kind of our approach to collaborating, one of them at least, primarily to enhance quality of life in the region. And then goal three is strengthen our capacity to anticipate and respond to demands of the region. Next slide. Process for phase two, where we're currently at. We had a number of guiding questions when we started this. So there was a duration of about six months before we kicked off phase two from when phase one was adopted in December of twenty twenty two. And part of that time, we defined kind of what, what was phase two going to answer as far as questions. Really, the big one is what programs, projects and investments are needed to deliver on that strategic foundation. Second one is how should STA service modes and network evolve? How can new investments align with the funding we have available from the community? As well as grants and what will be required in terms of new resources, new capabilities, facilities to successfully deliver on the strategic plan. One thing we're doing in parallel with this effort is updating our facilities master plan. So towards the fall, hopefully those will be integrated around that time. So anything we discover in that facilities master plan effort will be evaluated as part of the refining of our initiatives and what we're going to be focusing on in the next decade. Next slide. This is a general overview of the process. Sorry for the small print, but really it focuses on what the funding scenarios are. Engagement with the community and stakeholders, evaluating our network, and I'll get to that here in a second. We're pretty much done with that evaluation process. Looking at, we're right now finishing up with the organizational capacity analysis.
Sure.
And that is looking at given anticipated changes in the next decade, what do we as an organization from our capacity in terms of everything from labor to administration, what do we need to be able to achieve what we're setting out to achieve? And then finally, looking at initiative development and refining that, we'll be starting on that probably in the May-June timeframe. And then working on that over the summer, refining it in the fall with final plan development to happen in December this, this next year. Next slide. Here's where we're at, a little bit more than halfway. We just started Q two right there. So the community engagement. Early on, we initially thought it would be a little bit heavier in the beginning, but it's shown that right now is kind of where we're hitting our stride. And so I have a meeting tomorrow night at the Spokane Valley Planning Commission. As I mentioned, we're hitting pretty much all the planning commissions in the region. But in, in addition to that, we're doing a good amount of focus groups with community-based organizations. We're also right now finalizing how we're going to be doing outreach to businesses in the communities we serve. And also just the general public. So we've held four open houses over the past four weeks or so around the community. We held a joint one with the city of Spokane Valley, and we invited Liberty Lake to come and present or be part of really the tabling where community members could come and get questions answered, not just on transit, but also transportation projects that were happening in their vicinity. So we did one in northeast Spokane. Just yesterday, we had one downtown Spokane Plaza. The one I mentioned, Spokane Valley Liberty Lake was joint. That was at the Spokane Valley library, the new library. And then we held one in West Plains. So trying to spread ourselves out. Next slide. So for funding and investment principles, we came up with three, three of them. One, ensure that STA, we can continue to deliver and maintain the improvements we've made since twenty sixteen. If you've been driving around, if you've read the paper, seen seen the articles written, you know that we've been investing in the network, not just from the service side, but also the amenities that we provided, the stops and the stations. Miraboo Parkway is probably getting, or sorry, Miraboo Station is going to be starting this summer, construction there of an improved parking ride. So that's just one example. I think that's most recent that you can see. If you happen to go along parts of Sprague and even within the city and even the city line, completion of that project, you know, that was a, a promise made as part of STA moving forward, which was implementation, construction implementation of the first bus rapid transit system that we have in, in the city, actually in the region. So the other one we're working on right now is Division Bus Rapid Transit. So we want to maintain what, what, what we've delivered. The second principle is leverage our current financial position to deliver one-time investments that are aligned with with those initiatives that we developed as part of this, this strategic plan. And any future service expansions, acknowledge that we will need a new revenue source to do that. We're quickly approaching our capacity and our limit from the funding that we have in place to deliver what we can deliver right now. Uh, next slide.
Question?
Yeah.
Are you saying that there's going to be a tax increase?
No, not saying that. But it's, it's, so if, if there is a preference for expanding service that we provide, then what we're saying is that we, by the end of this first STA moving forward plan, we're going to reach our capacity given the funding we have now to deliver service. We can't expand it more unless there's a funding service.
And what would that funding source look like?
Uh, the funding purse would be a, I think it's one tenth, one percent.
Tax.
Tax increase, but put to the voters, it would be automatic.
Okay, of course.
Okay. That's the key part.
And just make sure you're speaking to the microphone in future. So because we're being recorded. Sorry.
It's okay. No worries. So fixed route and fixed route is everything that you see on routes throughout Spokane County and the public transit benefit area that we serve. Our goal with this is in terms of the assessment that happened last fall was really to finalize the delivery of what we promised in the last strategic plan, STA moving forward. Respond to any changes because over ten years, things change in travel markets specifically related to pandemic that has shifted some things. The impacts there, definitely we felt that as has everyone. Continue to ensure system-wide efficiency and effectiveness, and then identify the best opportunities for future mobility. Next slide. So the result, we had a third-party consultants evaluate our network. And they came back saying STA performs well. Our recovery post-COVID is outpacing our peers across the nation. We're one of a few that we're seeing ridership is actually recovering. And in Sept- as of September, this date is a little bit old, but we were seeing weekday ridership about at twenty nineteen levels, so pre-pandemic levels. Week, weekend ridership, this was something that was noted, and that is that it's exceeding twenty nineteen levels. So there's been a change there for whatever reason could be related to the pandemic. But what we're seeing is that there's more demand for for weekend services. So that's an exciting development. The last one is that the system-wide average for productivity is excellent for a system of our size. So next slide. They, they put the reasons of this success that we're serving the right places. The most transit that we have supports high-density areas. They're well-served. Areas of highest needs are served. Most routes have multiple options for connections. And not just at the plaza throughout the network. And there's substantial destinations at the end of the line, each, each route. The best corridors, this is a really important component, is that they have fifteen-minute service. When you have service times that are less than that, you make it more challenging for people to use. With fifteen-minute service, you generally don't need a schedule. You know a bus will be by at some point. You don't need to check it. And service adjustments, we do on an annual basis. So we're continuing to improve the system, look at ways we can optimize and continually improve what we're delivering to our customers. Next slide. The opportunities that were identified as part of that network analysis, looking at commuter service. Like I mentioned, things have shifted a little bit. The region is growing. Lots of people are relocating here. Households are growing. You know, that is an opportunity and going to continue to be an opportunity. The opportunity to improve Spokane Valley service was called out as well as looking at on-demand service. So you know, in areas of the public transit benefit area where mobility is desired, but if you were to put a dedicated bus line on there, it would be way too expensive and then utilize. How can we utilize on-demand service in some manner to deliver service there? So we're going to be looking at that opportunity as well as enhancing weekend services where it makes sense, and then expanding our high-performance transit network, which has the enhanced amenities. You see the, the bus stops, the improved bus stops, the the monitors that identify when the next buses occur, cameras, those kind of things, better lighting. You know, not just a flag on a pole somewhere out on the street. So that's our high-performance transit network. It generally has better better headways, meaning more frequent service, that type of thing. So next slide. So we have two action pathways. First one, complete the delivery that I mentioned of STA moving forward and near-term investments that we need to make. As well as number two, identify improvement opportunities and expansion opportunities as Connect 2035 initiatives that we will evaluate. So those are the two paths we're working on currently. Next slide. Near-term and one-time investments. I mentioned Division BRT. That's a transformative project for that nine-mile corridor. Continue to improve and expand the high-performance transit network. Speed reliability are two of those key components as well as station upgrades. And then expand the coverage. I mentioned the on-demand service pilot. Long-term, as part of Connect 2035 and ongoing, expand that network, the HPT network, improve it, service upgrades, enhance frequency, as we mentioned. Improving evening and weekend service. Expand coverage geographically and the times that we serve as well as additional regional service. As an option. So that's what we're, we're looking at right now. This slide just kind of identifies our approach to evaluating the initiatives. But in a nutshell, they'll represent the programs, the projects, and then the investments that are needed to deliver on the goals we covered in the beginning. So customer experience, community partnerships, and our capacity. Next slide. These are the, some of the flagship projects currently. Division Street BRT and then zero emission fleet transition as well as the facilities master plan. Those are three big ones. We'll continue to refine underneath the goals and categorize the initiatives. You can see there in that graphic. Next slide. The core initiatives. And then the enhanced initiatives we mentioned before. So those core initiatives are conditioned upon the renewal of the additional two tenths of one percent sales tax rate. We would use and leverage the available resources we have to deliver those. And then those initiatives would be defined as anything such as one-time projects, capital pilot projects, anything that's cost-neutral to service as well as high-priority investments that fit within our, our available resources. And the timeframe for those investments, those core initiatives would be in the first five years of the plan. So something in the second five years of that plan would be under the enhanced initiatives that, that, that could be requiring additional funding. And that's that one tenth of one percent sales tax rate or other. That would need to be in place if we were to, to move forward with, with this column. Sources to be decided, but the initiatives would be really high-priority investments that can't be delivered with the resources we have today. But it could include recurring investments, new and expanded service throughout the region. Again, the timeframe would be twenty thirty to twenty thirty-five. Next slide. This shows kind of how the various initiatives are generated. We're looking at our peers across the nation. We're taking the information from fixed route network assessment. We're also using the internal capacity analysis we're completing. As I mentioned, the facilities master plan as well as the zero-emission vehicle transition plan. So moving away from diesel. And then the phase one input provides the other side of the, the column there. The community engagement is going to help us deliver some initiatives, stakeholder engagement, such as yourselves at this meeting, and then employee engagement, internal employee engagement. As well. So the methods we're using are on the far right. We have some surveys that are coming up, rider forums. Community-based organization engagements, those are some of the nonprofits. As well as Plaza Activation, I mentioned that, as well as Intercept surveys possibly out at stops and at stations across the region. Slide. The website, STA Connect 2035. This is really what we've been working on right now. We have been since November connecting with the stakeholder organizations where we can. That's going to ramp up here, starting next month even more. We've developed something called the Insight Network. One of the things with surveys is a lot of times you do a survey and then you get all the input and then you don't as a surveyor or a surveyee, you don't hear back about what was discovered and, and how it was utilized. So we decided last fall to start something called the Insight Network, and it's really a way for us on a monthly basis. We have a, we have a group of people who've we've grown the numbers who have volunteered to do a survey with us at least once or twice a month on particular topics. They're very short, by-date questions usually. And we ask them questions about that topic, and we continue to stay engaged with them throughout the rest of this, this calendar year. It's a way for us to kind of keep a, a group of people engaged with the, the effort we're undertaking and learn about particular topics. The one we did last month was on technology and transit. And so we were able to, we had an open-ended question about what are your expectations about technology and how we utilize that and integrate it into transit. And it revealed some really insightful things that we're able to use immediately get that reviewed by our communications team. So I think it's, it's shown to be a pretty valuable way to get input as we're going through this. We've also been doing board engagement tours with our, we have a very large board, and what we've managed to do is, is provide them opportunities to see sort of the back office operations. So we've held tours of our dispatch so they can understand how buses are dispatched and managed throughout the system on a, on a daily basis. We gave them just this last week, a tour of customer service in the plaza. Got that where they were able to meet with the security team and learn how security is not only helping and working at the plaza, but also through the network and on our buses. And then we have one coming up for paratransit. That's a whole section of a transit that services that we provide that not a lot of people know about unless you have needs for that particular service. So those are some of the ways we're doing engagement currently. Next slide. This is more of the engagement, the awareness side of what we're doing. For the feedback on the network and the initiative development, as I mentioned, we're looking at doing rider forums, tabling presentations such as this. Going to community events and locations. We're going to be at the Active Living Expo that's being held here this month. Yeah, this month over at I just, I was going to say Red Lion, but it hasn't been Red Lion in decades. I'm dating myself. The hotel over there on Sullivan, where Max's is. And as I mentioned, board member input, we have a public survey we'll be putting out soon as well as getting feedback from our sort of employees as well. So next slide, I think that might be the last one. Next steps. So more community engagement, identifying what the initiatives are going to be. Getting the feedback from the capacity assessment and what those recommendations are. Developing performance metrics, reviewing those at least, refining them. And then we're, we have a few more board workshops this year. The next one is in Q two, I believe it's scheduled for June this year, where we will work, meet with our board and start working through this initiative development. I think that's the last side, slide, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Go ahead. Commissioner Bob.
Yeah, I've got a several requests.
Great.
Okay. And you don't have to take notes, but maybe you may want to take notes.
Let me just drop a few.
So comment, have you lately driven east on ninety and, and seen the density in Post Falls, Idaho?
Yes.
So myself, having lived in cities that are on borderlines. So I've lived in St. Louis, I've lived in Kansas City. And public transportation was a by-state effort.
Yeah.
With by-state funding. And by, everything was done with by-state in mind. So I think you're going to get to a point where you really need to start partnering up with Cootney County slash Idaho. Now, I don't know how many Idaho plates we have in our parking right here. I don't, I haven't gone out and surveyed it.
More than five, I would say.
But you know, I think it's to, to the region's benefit to have a by-state approach. Considering the, the population growth and the entertainment facilities in, in downtown Spokane. It's only going to increase traffic. The regional airport, it's only, you're going to have more traffic.
Right.
So I really think you ought to guy, you guys got to get ahead of the curve here and figure out how to set up a by-state commission.
I can say, I agree. I think we at STA would agree with everything you've, you've said there. Acknowledging that there is a huge, huge need for, for more cooperation. I know the the STA moving forward had identified a component of trying to do a pilot for into Cootney County with STA, given the the demand that you mentioned. So we're still working on that. I don't know where that's at. That's not under my my purvey, but I can certainly follow up and find out where that's at.
I think it's going to have to happen.
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah.
So that was the first thing. The second thing is that the, the increased capacity in terms of schedules and on weekends. I think it's going to be increasingly important, again, considering all the I think it's gonna be uh increasingly important, again, considering all the um. The entertainment activities in downtown Spokane with the uh. With the football stadium, the soccer arena, all that stuff.
Yeah.
And I know it's a challenge, but uh. Uh have you considered smaller buses and driverless buses?
I don't know about the smaller buses. I know there's a lot of effort put into. How do you maximize the efficiency and the return on on your investment in the buses? Balancing that with providing a, you know, a standardized. Equipment that we can work on.
I I've I've been riding the bus and and it's, you know, the the, there's way more capacity on the buses than is what. Really required. So my my thought would be to consider. Smaller buses, but I understand that you've got kind of the the labor component.
Yeah.
If you looked at driverless buses, that might overcome some of the labor costs associated with a smaller bus.
Yeah, if if the uh if the technology's there. For all seasons, and I have, I was in Phoenix and I did take one of their driverless cars. Um when I was down there, but um you know, it's advancing certainly.
Well, when you got a fixed route, which would be the next question, is there is there ever gonna be a dedicated route? Dedicated right-of-way.
Gotcha. Or buses specifically. Right now, what we're looking at on Division B R T would be a what we call a bat lane, a business access and transit.
Yeah.
So that is next in terms of what we're proposing.
Yeah.
Close to a dedicated. You know, we do still have the, the right-of-way. The old Milwaukee line that ran through here and.
Oh, yeah.
We don't own it, the county. So that's still in place, you know. You know, those are kind of the strategic from a strategic perspective. Looking out ahead and making sure that things like that are in place. So as things change, like you're saying, you can respond to that.
And then finally, you've got to open up the restroom at STA.
It is.
Is it open now?
It's been open, yeah, for months. I've been down.
Last time, last couple of times, I I had to go upstairs and go to that. You know, where where you have a security guard to check in to go to the damn bathroom.
Unfortunately, that's the the state of uh our operating environment. They're working on the one downstairs.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, that one's being renovated, they're adding doors. Um it still will be though controlled in that that same.
I just, you know, you gotta go, you gotta get in there, especially after riding from uh Liberty Lake downtown. It's to not have a working, functioning restroom. Is.
They're working and they're functioning, they just uh are limited in their access and it's controlled.
To me, if it's limited in access to the level it was, it's not working and it's not functioning, you wanna have to wait a half hour to get into the damn bathroom.
Yeah.
So that's gotta be fixed. Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Salberg. Um Brian, uh you know that we have city council members that have sat on your board and they've been very active, one of whom is sitting in the corner back there and now trying to hide. Um and and they give us reports regularly on your progress. I'm um on a couple of S R T C committees as well. And this board, our commission is gonna be tasked to uh reduce the amount of trips that we have. Now to. Carbon that we're producing and everything. And one of the things that I haven't heard much about is. Where STA is with incentivizing, re-incentivizing. Commute trip reduction, like it used, like it was before, it's just, I don't hear anything about it, so. And it wasn't on your slide, so can you just tell me the status?
So we do participate uh with the commute trip reduction program.
Right, we have.
Yeah, that is an employer of a certain size, you're obligated to participate in that. Uh so we assist with um. With that, tracking that information and then um, you know, also with providing. Uh the. Uh the the passes, you know, those type of things for certain employers, contracts with employers to to deliver. Uh passes to their employees who use them, so. So it still is in place.
Status quo, no changes.
There haven't been, as far as I know, any changes. Um that's more of our business services group, I don't. We're necessarily in that, but I do participate in that and I know, I was just looking at the data the other day that. There's still a quite a few Altech out here, just right to as well, so.
Yeah, my thought was, going along with Jim's comment is that. With the increased ridership that we need to have instead of single occupant vehicles.
Right.
Um that if that was looked at and fine-tuned and advertised a little bit, but you're doing community engagement. I just don't hear commuter production anymore.
Yeah.
And so the more that we hear about it during this time, I think.
Yeah.
The better we might be able to utilize it.
Well, all this is good feedback I can certainly take back.
Other questions?
But yeah. This is DG on Zoom. Um thank you for that presentation, well worth. Uh hearing it from start to finish, as we have more to go. I do agree with Jim in that revenue sharing of any kind is always a plus in a region that. Shares many of the same complexities, travel, et cetera. Um so. Um I would recommend to highly consider it in anyone who sits on that board to bring it up early and often. Uh because it is a revenue generating um enterprise and it is worth always looking into. So thank you so much for your presentation. It was good. Uh it was thorough, I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Commission, Paul.
Yep, thank you. Just an observation, uh your slide about the uh on-demand service, I immediately went into my mind. Are you going into competition with Uber, Lyft and those types of on-demand uh services?
No, it 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 wouldn't be des- dest- uh or origin to destination, it would be some, some. Form of maybe close to origin. And close to destination or closer to our network. So you can connect to something that will get you to your destination, so.
I only bring it up because on the surface, that's what I went to immediately, so as you're presenting this to other bodies, you might wanna.
Yeah.
Think uh a comment on that. And my other question for you is, uh you commented about the zero emissions vehicles, is that? So I I don't follow it that closely, is that self-motivated or is that legislatively mandated?
Uh there are, I believe there's some legislative mandate.
I I just checked online.
Yeah.
Vehicle, passenger vehicles, light duty trucks, I didn't see anything about buses. And and I guess the reason why I'm asking that question is. I'm assuming you're meaning all-electric.
Not necessarily, there's other technologies.
There's other ways.
Yeah, I mean, our fleet is made up of uh quite a bit of different. Technologies right now. Uh we do have some that are fully electric, battery-operated. But I think zero, we we use the term zero emissions because it's. We don't know what that future state will look like or what it will be. Uh so it's um a a bit more generic, gives us flexibility to respond instead of saying we're going all-electric, so.
Fair enough, thank you. Other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Um my questions are focused basically, Brian, on security.
Yes.
Each of the buses. Does the bus have a camera? Kind of like school buses.
Believe all of our buses have cameras, they have monitors. That display what is being shown, there's signage, all of our buses now have um. I believe they all have uh doors for the drivers to protect the drivers. So there's video cameras on the buses that record everything.
Could you identify where bus A is at any given time throughout the day?
Yeah, our dispatch knows, they, you go to our dispatch, you'll see a room with monitors and. They're actively, they can see where a bus is in the network at any point in time.
Can the driver talk to dispatch?
Yes, they have communications back to dispatch, in fact, dispatch. If there's some development where, it happened the other day, I was taking a bus from Spokane to my home in the valley. And um there was an accident on the freeway and they had to reroute so that. They get a call, reroute down this way and then, because it was a freeway bus, they knew that they weren't gonna pick anybody up, they can get them.
Perfect, good, good. The sex, second part is. Transportation to the airport.
Yes.
Is it possible to go from this conference room to the airport on a bus?
I believe it is, I've taken it from Valley Transit Center straight through to the airport. We're working on one of the the high-performance transit lines I mentioned. Is the I ninety corridor, which would um. Which would enhance that corridor and that development plan to to deliver that service.
And the last question, relative to seniors. Uh there are more and more and more retirement homes, communities being developed. Is there a plan in place to provide extensive or or I should say. Additional. Bus transportation to those facilities.
Depends on where they're.
I was gonna say, for example, we might have ten now, in twenty thirty, we might have forty. And so that becomes a whole nucleus for. Transportation demand.
Yeah, yeah, and it, I will say, when you're think linking transit and land use. Uh it becomes very difficult once something is put in place. To just deliver, decide to deliver transit there. There's there's cost impacts that we have to be aware of efficiency. Uh as well as what the network is that allows us to get to that new development, so. What? What my take is, is that when land use follows transit. That's the best case scenario, that's the best world, real-world situation you could ask for, uh because that. Takes that investment we've already made. And it just improves it, gives it the opportunity to improve and enhance it, so. When you don't and you have isolated places and neighborhoods. It becomes challenging and I think that's where the mobility on demand we did, I mentioned earlier, comes into play. Um because it, we can't just tweak the network in that manner to suddenly provide service to an area that was developed that. Maybe lower density, there may be nothing in between. The network and that location, so it becomes really expensive, so. We're looking at mobility on demand as a pilot to possibly help solve that, get people from there somehow. To the network so they can participate.
Good, thank you. Good presentation.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yep. Um yes, thanks for your presentation.
Yeah.
Um you had mentioned that there, the ridership um had returned to pre-pandemic levels approximately. Have you seen a shift in the age group of that at all?
Yeah, there, there was an agreement with um if you ride the buses in Spokane. And you happen to be on a bus around three o'clock, there'll be a large influx of students. Kids under the age of eighteen, um Spokane Public Schools uh provides um. Through funding through the state, uh connect cards for all students uh within Spokane Public School. So they can ride for free. Um and so what you see is a lot of the, the buses are being utilized by students at that time and that's, that certainly helped with some of our ridership recovery. So. And it's getting them familiar with, you know, I think it's a good practice because they get familiar with transit. It allows them the ability to get out and about. A way that maybe historically they they would consider using.
And I myself have not ridden public transit here for a number of years. Um but do you guys have an app as part of your technology package that allows you to track your bus, your route, approximate arrival time, that sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah, we have uh, we have our app, a connect app. That is part of our connect card. You can download that, whatever, whatever Android or Apple. Operating system you have, um but there's others out there, Google, Google Maps is a really good integrated transit. Mapping um program. In fact, I think we'd leverage that, uh but there's also another one called um. Transit Royale that I use. Uh so there's a number of good ways to be out. Also, a lot of our stops too, if you, if you know your stop, you can text a number and text that stop number. To the phone number, uh and it'll tell you where the bus is and when it's arriving.
That's great.
A lot of people, and that's one of the things we learned from that survey, was that a lot of people like that and they're using that. You know, they may not have the app, but if they can have a phone and they can text it, they know what the bus is on its way. Yeah, they like that, so.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Any other question, Commissioner James?
Yeah, Brian, wh- what is the principal source of funding for the STA?
STA is the sales tax revenue.
Okay.
That uh anyone in the, if you purchase anything um within the public transit benefit area, ETBA. And it's, it's got an irregular boundary, it's not all of Spokane County, it's even there.
Do you get any federal money?
Yes, you do get federal money.
How much of of the overall funding is federal money?
Uh off the top of my head, I can't say. But we do get, we're constantly applying for grants, for federal grants, um part of, uh I do know the city line was funded through federal, federal dollars and. Division B R T is also. Slated for some federal funding.
I don't mean to sound ignorant, but what is B R T?
Best Rapid Transit, thank you, thank you for asking.
So when the city of Liberty Lake is evaluating applications for housing developments or what have you. Does the STA? I would assume the STA gets a circular on com- asking for comments.
Yes.
And do you actively? Do that?
Yes, we review. We review through the SEPA process.
Okay.
Your planning department sends out a notification. Um and we get those, we review them. If there's something that we need to comment on, we'll assemble a letter, draft, I'll draft a letter, one of my staff will, and then we'll. Route it around and make sure everybody's on board, but. And then put it.
Is there anything that Liberty Lake could do better with regard to uh STA and providing access for folks?
Uh I think. I think when I mention land use and transit. You know, linking those two, knowing that it's important to understand where you're putting density. That transit can help, as we've talked about today, reduce the demand. For single occupancy vehicles, you know, commuting trip options, that type of thing. It's just a way to provide options for mobility and it works really well when uh. Higher density developments.
Sure.
Goes in.
Is there any part of the system that exists today that you service that's paying for itself?
No, off the top of my head. The return, I don't work with those those values and and the finance side of it, look at it. I do know that the. The city line, you may have seen the article in the paper, I think it was this week, we just surpassed five hundred thousand rides and it. As a. As a, as a line, it sees the most trips per mile of our network, so. But, you know, as the the consultant said. Their evaluation is we have transit in the right places and we're connecting, making good connections. And they don't, they don't, their feedback goes, we don't see this all the time, this is not that common. So we kind of took that as a, as a big win, that we're doing something right, we're gonna continue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Brian, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Doing the presentation, that is really helpful.
Good.
To like, to begin to understand that.
That was the point, so.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh we'll move on now to proposed lighting code amendments. Mr. Wetterling.
Good evening, everyone. Um thank you for letting me be here. My name's Scott Wetterling, I'm the Director of Development for Top Off. Um Top Off has submitted a request for a text amendment to the lighting ordinance of the development code. And I thought I'd come here to give a high-level introduction to. Top Off, what it is, who we are, and how we aim to be an asset and partner in the local community. Uh next slide, please. Uh just to give a quick overview, I think the closest Top Off to Liberty Lake, a Renton in Washington, is about four and a half hour away, if you wanted to make that kind of drive, but. Uh we're hoping to bring one slightly closer. If you wanted to make that kind of drive, but, uh, we're hoping to bring one slightly closer to you. This is the, this is Top Golf latest concept. Uh, if you've been to a Top Golf before, we had multiple iterations of. Our prototypes, depending on the market size and the age of the venue. This, this, um. Prototype that we're pro- proposing to bring here is our latest and greatest concept. It's basically two floors, it's seventy-two hitting bays. The hitting bays are very synonymous to like a bowling alley lane that you would go rent a, rent a lane with some of your friends. Uh, and play in small groups. So Top Golf had a very similar concept. We call them, uh, bays, but you go rent a bay with, uh, four, five, six buddies and get the, enjoy the game of golf. Um, as I was saying, it's two stories, thirty-six hitting bays per floor. Um, to get seventy-two total, and we have an outdoor area as well. I have some real life photos of. Other venues that are very similar concepts to kind of show you what it looks like so you can envision it without trying to look at a rendering like we see here. Uh, next slide please. Uh, here is an overview map of all the Top Goffs within the country. Uh, right now, Top Golf currently had ninety-nine locations worldwide. Well, the ninety-nine venue is opening this Friday in the Raleigh Durham Market. Um, and I wanted to communicate similar markets. Uh, that have a very, the same concept of the two-story seventy-two bay or sixty bay, depending on the market size. Uh, that we have currently. And all these that you see on the left side, Boise Vineyard, Lafayette, et cetera. Uh, are either under construction or have already been built within the last three years. Next slide please. A lot of information here, but wanted to give you some high-level facts. Top Golf is a company. Uh, Top Golf was recently acquired by Callaway, the golf company, in two thousand and twenty-one. So we are, we are owned by Callaway, and Callaway was so confident in our brand. That they actually renamed the company Top Golf Callaway Brands. So if you were going on like a stock market, you would have to look up M A G, Modern Golf, which stood, stands for the Top Golf Callaway Brands. Uh, we've been around for twenty-plus years. We have twenty-five thousand employees. We call them associates. Um, as I mentioned, we had ninety-nine venues worldwide. And, uh, we aim to open about seven to ten venues per year. Historically since two thousand and fifteen, and we are continuing to do so. Uh, we hope that Liberty Lake is one of those ten in the upcoming year. Um, we are strategic partners with a lot of golf, uh, related, uh, enterprises and entities. Uh, basically Top Golf's underlying goal is to just grow the game of golf however we can. Uh, speaking a little bit to the Top Golf economic model here. Um, the proposed prototype that you saw earlier is about a twenty-four, twenty-five million dollar construction project. Uh, we forecast that it will bring twenty to twenty-four million dollars in tax revenue over a ten-year period. Uh, we employ about a hundred and fifty people during the phase of the construction, which is about a twelve-month duration. And once we open our doors to the public, we create twenty, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-five jobs. Um, the annual projected sales revenue is fourteen to seventeen million dollars per year. And we are slated to attract about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand visitors per year to the area. Uh, something that's really not reflected on this slide is the Top Golf is typically seen as a destination attraction. Uh, so bringing guests from outside market to the area, um, forty-five minutes to an hour away. Uh, our guests will typically stay at our menu for about two hours, but then since they drove that distance, they tend to stick around, which. Uh, elevates the local businesses that are surrounding it as well, the local community. Uh, the commercial presence, uh, I think commercial presence had been coming into Liberty Lake, but we feel that Top Golf. Will be a premier entertainment draw for the community. Uh, next slide please. Uh, this slide is just to speak to our commitment to growing the game of golf. Uh, I know Liberty Lake is the golf community and we are. Focused to being a partner with local golf courses and ranges. Uh, as I was saying earlier, Top Golf's entire mission is to grow the game of golf however, however we can. And we do that by, by exposing the game of golf to inexperienced and experienced players alike. Uh, the key number on this slide, in my opinion, is fifty-one percent of people that come to Top Golf, basically have never picked up a club in their life. And probably never would, but the fact that you have a venue that promotes. Just having fun, being silly, having fun with your friends. You don't have to pay for clubs when you get there, if they're provided for free. You don't have to pay a membership to get into the, into the facility. Uh, especially open to the public. You come in, you, you rent a bay just like you would a bowling alley, but. We provide all the equipment and the ball and everything for you, so it. Eliminates that barrier of entry that you would see on a typical golf course. Hey, I need to, I need to go play. I need to go rent clubs. I need to go buy fifteen hundred dollars set of clubs. That you probably never invest in yourself to do that. So this helps bring more people to the game than probably would never have been exposed to it. Uh, next slide please. Uh, just fun, affordable, tech-driven, and all-inclusive, um. Affordable, just talking about the free club, no membership required, uh, just come and play. Tech-driven, uh, Top Golf had what we call top traitor technology. So if you ever watched a golf. Golf match on TV and you see the, the blue lasers behind the ball and it said, hey, the apex with a hundred and twenty yards and. It went this fast and this was the clubhead speed and all that stuff. Uh, that is, uh, that's Top Golf's top traitor technology and we would have that in this venue. So if you are an avid golfer and you play. Every time you hit the ball, it'll give you all those stats on the screen, which helps if you want to go get lessons. You want to work on your club head speed for those that are more. Passionate about improving your game, we have that there and we plan to have it here as well. Um, all-inclusive, all-weather, all-weather, um, we are open. All year round, um, it's a covered space. You don't have to worry about rain or sunshine. Uh, we also have heated bays, so in the middle, in the middle of the winter, you crank up the heat on your bay. And there's two rating heaters above you that provide warmth and temperature for constant gameplay. And there's some pretty cool pictures out there. People. Playing a snowstorm in shorts and a t-shirt because these, these, uh. They think the heater to crank up. Uh, next slide please. Just a little bit about the community, um, just the next few slides will just show what I was talking about. Oh, you have a good, next slide please. Uh, we have a youth play it forward program, once again, exposing kids or adults that might not have been exposed, but. In all of our communities, we allow youth to play for free between Monday and Thursday that are affiliated with like local school programs. So. We will, once we get closer, we'll contact the local school, school board and school district and they, you can come to a Top Golf. Monday through Thursday and play free golf for your entire golf team, which is really great for markets such as this where it's either cold, freezing or raining. You can have a golf team that can play year-round and practice year-round for the competitive, competitive season. Uh, next slide please. Uh, here are discounts for emergency military first responders. Uh, we offer discounted at all golf shops, so. Working with the community and honoring our heroes. Uh, next slide please. Uh, some of our national partners, uh, that we have here is shown. Something that's not on here is that Top Golf recently partnered with the Special Olympics program. Uh, pretty cool deal is that Top Golf will literally be a. Uh, an official sanctioned event in the Special Olympics. Uh, so players will be able to come to any of our venues. Uh, and participate in that program once it, once that picks off. Uh, next slide please. Uh, Pop Golf fights itself in becoming ingrained in the local level community. Uh, and as we get closer to breaking ground, our, our local team at the office will reach out to the local community and determine how best we can serve. Next slide please. Hey, uh, one more. Um, each Top Golf will have a PGA Tour professional on staff. Uh, to provide lessons and pointers, I guess, for people that want to either. Just have a, a checkup or if you want to have actual official lessons, we provide that too. Uh, Top Golf has a lot of kids programs. My kids have been in it, uh, in the summer. It's just, it's a big hit. You come in. Uh, basically nine to noon or nine to one. Um, you play, you play golf, you get lessons, you get, get lunch. And it gets the kids exposed to it and it also gets them out of the house, which is nice. Um, so we have all these Top Golf leagues and corporate events that we host, uh, throughout the year. Uh, just a lot of fun for the community to get involved. Uh, next slide please. I'm gonna show you some pictures I was talking about of the venue of a similar prototype that. Uh, I think, I believe all the pictures are from Wichita. Uh, so the closest one to here that it, it is this prototype would be at Boise. So, uh, next slide please. So this is the front view of the venue. Like I said earlier, just a two-story, uh, Top Golf, thirty-six, uh, bays per floor. Uh, next slide please. Every Top Golf is basically a. Uh, the bays are often the distance, but we do have a full-service kitchen and full-service bar. Uh, you don't have to play at the, you don't have to play golf in order, just come and enjoy dinner and leave. So. Uh, we do provide that for our guests. Uh, next slide please. Also a great spot to watch the game, uh, good hangout spot for after work or after school with the, the kids to watch, watch the game or. Go enjoy the game, uh, golf. Uh, next slide please. Uh, the, what, the, what I was talking about, like basically the bowling alley, so to speak, but we call them hitting bays. Uh, each bay can accommodate up to six players. Um, you basically run out the bay per hour. Um, or increment, uh, thereof. So every thirty minutes you can, you can run it and increment thereof or stay as long as you want. Um, and it's the same cost whether you have one person or you have six people. So just like a bowling alley, it doesn't matter how many people are in your bay. Um, so this is an example of what the hitting bay would look like. Uh, next slide please. Uh, the tee line right off the hitting bay, these, uh, these are what we, these are our ball dispensers, so. Uh, ball, uh, literally you just wave your club in front of the center and it kicks out a golf ball. It's got your little. Uh, your information on it for your name, because you got your, your name up on the scoreboard. So my name's Scott. I, I, uh, get the thing to come out, like Scott's about hit a golf ball. I whack it out there and it'll give you points depending on what game you're playing. Sort of like. A host of games you can play close to the pin, yellow targets, green targets, blue targets, et cetera, and you get to play against your friends. It's a lot of fun. Uh, and then on that screen right there is where you would get all your information for the gameplay. So if you're doing that top traitor technology and you hit your ball. All the information will be right there in front of you. Uh, next slide please. Um, this is just an example for Wichita, but each venue has, on this prototype, has a. Artistic expression throughout the, throughout the venue itself. Uh, we tend to partner with local. Uh, artists to try to come up with a concept to try to incorporate that into our venue however we can. Uh, next slide please. This is the outdoor patio space through those glass doors and stuff would be that, uh, that bar slash restaurant that you saw earlier. Uh, this is just a, a cool outdoor hangout area, cornhole, bags, uh, fire pits, just, uh. Just a nice place to just chill out with some friends and family. Next slide please. Uh, for those of you who have been to Renton or Boise or another Top Golf somewhere in the country, uh, Top Golf is constantly evolving and, and. Taking feedback from our guests and one of the biggest things is that. The guest desire to have a larger space behind a hitting base that would allow. For larger groups to just hang out and play the game of golf and not be separated like in the bar area we were talking about earlier. So. On the end of our tee lines, you'll see these big, large areas that really cater to larger parties for birthday parties, corporate events, things of that nature. Uh, next slide please. Uh, we also have a dedicated event space. If you want to have something quieter or maybe like a more formal corporate kickoff. Uh, competing and presentation and then work your way down to actually go play some game afterwards. We had that option as well. Uh, next slide please. So the main reason I'm giving this presentation is that we, uh, we being Top Golf had applied for a text amendment to the lighting ordinance. In the city development code. And on the next few slides, I just wanted to show you what lights we're talking about and. Uh, kind of just explain where they are located and, uh, just kind of like that you visualize what's going. So, next slide please. So this is an example of our Glendale, Arizona venue, uh, slightly different. Prototype, but this one's three floors or it would be, here would be two floors, but it kind of just gives you a concept of. The light, the lighting that you would see on a typical Top Golf, especially at nighttime. And, uh, just one thing to note on the end of this outfield, you'll see like these big giant TV screens and whatnot, um. Those are not being proposed here. That's just in the image and this is a, a good image to kind of show the overhead view, uh, at nighttime. So. The Liberty Lake venue would not have that, but if you focus on the, the building itself. The lights village, uh, or lack thereof at the property lines around the parking lot and throughout the outfield. Kind of give you a good perspective of what the lights would be on a Top Golf. Uh, next slide, just showed a close-up view of the hitting bays, uh, and the lights there. You could see. You can see those lights, uh, on the hitting bays and I'll show you a picture of those more closely on the next slide. Or maybe just fly out of this, but, uh, the proposed text amendment, uh, designed to mitigate the. Impact to the facility by, we're allowing private parties to agree to reach business agreements to allow for light trespass over property lines. Um, limiting the expanded lighting times to those, only those commercial uses that have an outdoor recreational facility in limited certain zones. And permitting light fixtures of a rating of G five or less under the bug rating system that's currently in the code. For commercial uses with an outdoor recreational facility in limited zones. So, for, pretty specific in the language, uh, text amendment that we're asking for. Uh, the next slide will just show you the, the lights themselves. These are, we call them game changer lights, um, but these are the lights and if you look at the. The image on the right side on the top, you'll see hanging off the beam there is. That fixture that I'm talking about. So these fixtures are literally mounted inside the building, pointing out toward the outfield. Um. I, I'd point to it, but I can't reach them tall enough, but, uh, and then. You would have those mounted on the first floor ceiling and the second floor ceiling. So they would be about fourteen feet above ground. And then one on the second floor would be about twenty-eight feet above ground, but they're tilted toward the outfield and then they're. Pan down so that it's not shining straight out, it's pointing down on the ground. And we try to be basically focused to illuminate the, predominantly the first half of the outfield. And then the, the light spillage would light up the, the back half of the outfield. Um, something that a lot of people ask questions about, uh, the poles themselves. There's no lights on the poles. Uh, we don't eliminate the outfield via the pole. We only illuminate it from the building itself. As we think about when you're hitting a golf ball and you're standing on the tee line, the only thing that matters is. Your side of the golf ball being lit up for you to see it. If you light up the backside, it's not gonna matter. There's no point in us having light in the outfield shining toward the building or shining down on the golf ball. It all matters from. The person hitting this perspective. So that's why they're mounted inside the building, uh, at the elevation that you see here. Um, yeah, that is all. I appreciate anyone's time. Did you want to give everyone a high-level overview of what we're asking for and the venue itself?
Questions? Mr. Bunker.
Yeah, I've seen the, some of the Top Golf facilities have like a little kid's putt-putt type, uh, facility. You know, like little greens and little horse for, for like, uh. Almost like a little putt-putt thing, but you, you don't have that here for this, uh, one?
No, so.
You know what I'm talking about?
Like a, like a little, like a mini golf course type?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, some, some of these prototypes, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, but being like in a more northern climate with the weather being the way it is, it typically this, this. As you get farther north, typically would not have.
Yeah. So where, where, where's the proposed, uh, location?
That is something we're still trying to finalize, but we wanted to get this text amendment in before the comprehensive plan. Uh, overhaul deadline. So we wanted to make sure that we had the ability or the right to. Build the Top Golf as we would see with the lighting and then if that got passed, then we would be able to lock down the property.
Well, I think part of the, uh, uh, question people would have is where? Because.
Right. If, if, it's not, we, it's not been finalized yet. We are looking at multiple areas, but. The, the biggest part was just getting this text amendment in because I think that deadline was. A couple of weeks ago or something to that effect. So we wanted to make sure we got it in and then I. Think the next submittal wouldn't until like twenty twenty-seven. Or if I understood it correctly. So that's why. We are going through this process before we actually have the property itself, which is not typical.
So which zones are the, is recommended for the zoning change? Which zones are there?
Uh, he's got them listed here.
Yeah, I know, but I, I just don't remember.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, I think where it's going is pretty critical for us making a decision. We can't write you a blank check and we won't. Write you.
That's why I said where, yeah.
So where it's gonna go is gonna be pretty important for us to know. Mr. Chair.
May I ask the planning department a question?
Sure.
There's districts identified in this proposal. Um, and I was trying to look at the zoning matrix and my eyes were crossing. And it was difficult for me to figure out exactly where this use would be allowed. Scott has identified M one, M two, M. Scott has identified M-one, M-two, M-three, C-one and C-two. Would all those districts allow this use?
I don't know if all of those zoning districts would allow the Topgolf use, but I know that based on the application submissions, the lighting changes would apply to those zones. So when we're talking about changes to the developing zone, um, the changes that are being proposed would apply to all of those zones.
So it would be reasonable to assume then that Topgolf would go in one of these districts?
Yes.
They could go anywhere else.
Can I, yeah, jump in here?
To help. Next question for Scott.
Okay.
How big is the site?
There you go.
Parking, facility, everything included. How big, how many acres?
Typically about ten acres.
I'm sorry?
Ten acres.
Ten acres.
Yeah.
Uh, just to follow up to that. So if you look at this, our zoning map and you identify the the commercial areas within the city boundaries and M-one, two, three, whatever, it's, it's all listed out. And it's all by that matrix. That's why it includes all those other zones. We just heard it, you need ten acres, right? So if you look at that zoning map, you're gonna eliminate all the M-zones because they're not big enough, is my assumption. So the only viable options are gonna be probably pretty close to the freeway cause those are the only big enough parcels to accommodate a facility like this and still stay within the zoning uh, the zoning uh, uh, matrix. Is that a fair statement?
That's what I was trying to look at.
Yeah.
Right across from high school.
Topgolf, I mean, if you look at a prototypical Topgolf, we are typically located
Yep.
right along the highway, uh, just for visibility, which typically already commercially zoned. Uh, exposure to traffic going back and forth. So I mean, that is what we're.
Exactly. So it, it, when it comes down to where is it going to be exactly, it's gonna be probably in the C-one or C-one zone right there next to Kramer or
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, there's no other areas in our zoning matrix that have big enough parcels if you zero in on it. So so to me, that kinda narrows it down already right there.
Yeah.
Question?
Yeah, well, um, question and comment, um. I think we know the area that could be and saying that I, I agree. We're not gonna write anybody a blank check. That's not our job to do that anyway. But in terms of make a recommendation. Um, I just would say we need to take a good look at the, the pages. I think it's four and five that they provided to us. And the light, the light issue, if that is a real issue, is only seven point eight percent of that the ridge line is doing. And then the graph that they got there too shows the comparison. So um, we have to consider the impact on traffic. We have to consider a whole bunch of other things, but this specific amendment has more to do just with the lighting. So I think saying that we're not gonna do anything about it is ridiculous. We're gonna have to narrow the focus and say what the amendment does, which is very specific. And I think we need to strongly consider it. This is a an opportunity uh, to improve an awful lot of the um income to the city, the visitors to the city, um, reputation. Um, it's a use of an area out there that would, the other part is what else is that, that land gonna be used for? What else is it gonna be good for? So I think that this is a very reasonable.
Mr. Chair? Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commission.
Has anybody been to one of these facilities? Yeah, so the three of us, three of us. I was at Las, I was in Las Vegas two weeks ago. And participated in a tournament with the, the Topgolf. What a blast. Excellent food, but the service quality was, was top-notch. And when I read this, that Topgolf was coming here, I thought, oh my gosh, we gotta jump on this right away. Why? If we don't, somebody else nearby is gonna do that. Because this is a great opportunity to go ahead and generate an enormous amount of revenue and have a lot of fun. Of course, I'm not a Topgolf promoter, but I like the facility and the experience that we had there. On the lighting, when you take a look at the lighting at the high school, it is very distracting when they have a football game or so. But it's short-term. And with that lighting distraction though, you get a lot of screaming and yelling and people having a lot of fun. So I would see, I would think that the Topgolf facility would be quite similar in lighting. However, the narrative says it's what, seven percent what the high school is?
Right.
And the high school is negligible overall. The other piece. Ten acres, probably, probably spot on. Of course, you know, that's your business.
I said twenty-five. How many acres?
Ten.
Ten. Oh, okay.
Ten.
Okay.
There's only a few spaces that
Shapes and stuff.
But there's also ten acres over there in Otis Orchards. And I'm sure Tony, ten acres in Spokane Valley that uh, could be made available to the public or at the Topgolf people to use. Um, I would think that we should take a very, very, very serious look at, at approving a lighting modification.
Other questions? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, you know, with regard to the light issue, um, my feeling is, given this, given the acreage that's needed and the potential location for this site, someone's ox is gonna get gored with regard to glare. Um, the high school has football games. Those are intermittent. Uh, this light issue is kinda like measuring sound. If you, if you live next to a freeway or an airport, um, they measure sound and community noise equivalent level, which is a constant rate of sound. Um, you can evaluate noise on a one-time event or a constant event. Scott, this would be open, what, seven days a week?
Yeah.
Seven days a week. So this would not be a football game Friday night at the stadium. This would be every day. We'd be, someone would be dealing with the glare issue.
With less than one-tenth of the lighting and glare issue that we have at Ridge Line on Friday.
What's that?
With less than ten percent.
Well, that's fine.
Of the glare.
That's fine. Uh, and I
It's not apples and apples.
I've had to deal, I, I entertained Topgolf for a property that I was working on in Maui years ago. Um, and one of the big issues was light and the night sky. Um, have you ever, in your experience building these facilities, looked at a night sky, night sky ordinance and came in with something a little more um effective in dealing with spill and glare? And any of the other facilities you've worked on?
Yeah, I mean, we uh, we utilize a third-party lighting consultant, um, and with the game changer lights or range, they're based out of Michigan, but uh, we, we have them come out to every one of our venues. Once we install those lights, uh, they calibrate everything and they dial it all in. Uh, and we do, then we do the light meter readings around all the, the entire perimeter of the outfield and make sure that zero point one foot candle or less. Um, so that's like something we're pretty passionate about. If we do feel like there are some glare issues uh, due to like spillage off to the side, there are the, the vitres that I had shown in the image that we would definitely put here due to the dark sky ordinance to make sure it's not make sure that's glaring and spilling upward or sideways. So they face like a giant hood that goes over it. But the, it also helps with that that the light are actually in the building. So you have the, you had the overhang of the floor above it as well, helping it from spilling out that way. So we're kinda trying to just double protect it, so to speak. So you already had the, the roof above it, but then put the, the shield of hood thing on them as well. Uh, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mission for you?
Uh, I would just echo uh, what some of the others have said. Um, this is a great offer.
Can you hear me now? There we go. This is a great opportunity for the city and you're absolutely spot on. There's ten acres everywhere else, up and down that corridor that are zoned properly. And that's the key here. It won't happen in Otis Orchards. It's gotta be zoned properly, right? And like Tom said, we're addressing a portion of our uh, illumination ordinance, nothing more, nothing less. And as I look at these numbers, I'm in comparison to the high school, uh, it, it has been pointed out, it's ten, it, it's ninety percent less than what that football field puts out. And I hear what you're saying, it's on Friday night, but it's more than that. There's track events, there's soccer events, there's marching band events. And it, I, I live over there, you live over there. There's a lot of activity at that, at that facility. So it's not just on Friday nights, right? Uh, the other thing I would comment on is there's probably more uh, uh, whitewash for the nighttime coming off the freeway from the headlights of the vehicles. Um, so the other thing to point out, currently um, in the uh, the, the one section that I had a question about was currently even the high school can have their lights on till eleven o'clock at night. Okay, per uh, per what it, what is, what, tell me what the number on this. Our lighting code, there we go. I don't know the number, but per our lighting code, you can run them until eleven o'clock, right? So um, the only question I would have is the, the um requested uh, language change for those zones, those, and they're all commercial uses. Um, is that it'd be um, uh, not subject to the time restrictions uh, on the illumination set. So my question would be, since all the others that I've seen close at midnight, would you entertain lights off at midnight?
We would, and the only reason I hesitated, like we went to Boise, for example, like we said, they, they close at midnight. Uh, typically we have those outfield lights where we would, after the venue closes, they're all programmable. Digital, you ever switch it on an iPad or whatever, but we, we made the turn way down, but we illuminated enough to that the the ball picker guys who brought them, but like it's not, not it's on, but it's not, you know, at the pole right. That's why I, I could I can see that coming up as a question from somebody. There's a difference between, thank you. There's a difference between um, shall not, shall not be subject to time restrictions at all versus, hey, we're gonna dim them down at midnight at closing and leave on only what we need to uh, do maintenance and prepare for the next day's activities. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Um, that's my only question in the, the suggestions that you've given. The other thing I'd like to point out is based on the sales tax revenue from the construction project, based on um, uh, estimated a fourteen to seventeen annual sales venue. Um, keep in mind in your numbers here, we don't get the full nine percent. Wouldn't that be great? We only get the two point five of the nine. The rest goes to the state. Um, but still, that's gonna be per year, my best guess, about a five hundred thousand dollar increase in our revenue directly to this city, which is based on last year's revenue estimates, about three point eight percent increase. So that's, again, that's not something just to quickly overlook. Um, and the other part of this that I appreciate is it brings jobs to the city, right? It, it encourages uh, uh, school use. They offer promotions for veterans. Um, uh, uh, um, not to mention the cost of the build. Um, and we are a golf cart-friendly community. How could you? I mean, it just fits, right? Um, so uh, that's my only comments, I think, on that, all of that. Uh, obviously, any transportation questions would come up in the planning review and the planning department and they would work that out, correct? Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Question of the planning department. Just following up on what Phil just said. If this proposed use goes into a district that allows it to be built, what other review would the commission have? They pull a building permit and get permits for the lights, whatever they're going to do. Would we necessarily see that again? And could we then, you can't put conditions on a building permit, I don't think, uh, time of operation, number of lights, those kinds of things that Phil was just talking about. Unless we get that or the council gets it on some kind of discretionary approval, it's pretty much, it's pretty straightforward. Am I, am I correct? There's a full SEPA review.
That, that's was gonna be my statement is that we, we could put certain conditions in during the SEPA review process.
Okay.
Um, for when the, the land development portion of it comes forward. Again, this is, there will be a SEPA for this part of it, which is just for the development code. So it's a non non-project action at this point. So there'll be two separate SEPAs.
Okay.
There would be an additional SEPA when they actually go to do the land development portion of it. And that it'll be good, we could put additional conditions on at that.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Um, Scott, you showed a picture up there of the Glendale location. Are we able to go back to that real quick? Whoever's in charge of the PowerPoint? That one, right? If you go forward one. Yes. Um, that all looks great. I, I don't see any issues with that, especially compared to um, what everybody's talking about ridge lines, uh, football field, multi-use field. Um, how is that in comparison to the Boise location? Cause I have seen the Boise location at night and it is much brighter than that in person.
The biggest difference, well, I mean, the prototypes are different. Um, the Boise, I, I know the Boise, I'm not sure when, when we actually there, were you there when it opened or?
A couple of months ago.
Okay. Um, I've not personally been to the Boise location, and we were speaking offhand about it, but the Boise location is a two-story venue. This right here is a three-story venue. Uh, but the, the actual look of how it looks like from above should be roughly the same. So I'm surprised you could say that. I've not, I've not personally been.
Yeah, and I, I haven't been inside the facility in Boise, but I've been outside of it and it immediately drew my attention, which is probably the point of that. You know, driving by, that's why they put them along freeways or major corridors. Um, but it is in person, when you're there looking at it significantly brighter than this image portrays. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. That's why I was curious on how similar this one might be to the Boise one.
I, I do know that when Boise opened initially, there were some initial complaints about the brightness and the glare, especially for people driving whatever east, southbound on that, on that highway, trying to turn on the left side of the venue. Uh, so we had some city folks come out and we had our lighting guy come out and did some readjustments of the lights and dialed some dimming, dimmed it down a little bit on the, on that side and kind of reduced the glare. So that's why I asked if you were out there why you want it, why you want it open? Because there was an issue at, in the beginning, but then we met with city and they talked back and forth and we dialed it all down and everyone was in agreement, agreeing that it was good. And that's kinda like how it is today. So.
Okay. And that's good to hear that that is an option, um, instead of just when it opens, that's how it is and too bad.
Yeah, we're not gonna, you know, blind people with the lights and say, oh, well, it's too bad. Uh, no, we definitely work it and not it's kinda, like I said, we try to eliminate predominantly just the first half of the outfield because you really don't need that much light in the back. You don't need to be able to read a book in the back of the outfield. Uh, as long as you can see your golf ball, that's really all that matters from a guest perspective and a guest experience. So we're by just dialing it down to the front half, it greatly reduces glare for the people that are.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, and I would just reiterate what's already been said, um, as far as like the time restrictions. I think that that sort of thing will need to be looked at by the commission. Um, I have a non-voting position on this commission, but I would just caution everybody to take a hard look at that to make sure that we're not opening up a can of worms. Um, Topgolf is not the only company or developer, if you will, of a property that may also want to do something similar. So we can't look at this as just hey, Topgolf is coming to town. That's great. We need to look at it as this is a permanent change to our code and what other uses could be allowed in the future too, that all of a sudden now you have ten of these lined up along the freeway. Granted, we don't have that much land left to be built on, but I would just caution the commission to look outside of the box and not just look at this is Topgolf. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Um, also, my comments are, uh, I understand the pluses of all of this. I don't want us to get carried away by revenue. Uh, a lot of this land that is zoned is across the street from residential properties. Uh, single family that people have paid seven, eight hundred thousand dollars for these homes. And it's not just the lighting we have to consider. It is traffic, noise, issues that go along with that. And the coming and going often And the coming and going often, and particularly for extended hours concerns me if it's gonna be somewhere close to these, um, uh, housing developments. So we have to keep that in mind, we cannot just look at lighting, we have to consider the entire impact of this. And I, I'll admit, there's a lot of pluses to this, no question about it, it's a beautiful facility, and I have no questions about that. I'm just very concerned about where it might go and how it may affect the people that live here already. So there's a commission to keep that in mind as well.
Mister Chair, my, my position would be, I can't recommend this to the council without seeing a site-specific proposal for the facility. That way we could evaluate its relationship to residential, to the freeway, the commercial, the points you just so elegantly stated, without knowing exactly where this thing is supposed to be, I think it's tough on us to say yes at this point.
And I agree, but I also understand their point is unless this gets changed, they can't afford to spend the money for the property. And I get that, I totally understand that. Um, and so that's part of the issue here, is what we have to consider is both from the, the applicant's point of view, as well as the citizens that live here now. And I, I get it, I, I understand the issue, so I think it's something we're gonna have to discuss at length before we can make a decision about this, because you're right, once we recommend this to city council, if they agree, it's a permanent change. So, and there are other, uh, entities that might wanna, uh, do similar things. And when we change lighting code, that could be a huge thing, because not everybody is gonna have the sense that this applicant has about what lighting can do and what, how it can hinder the surrounding areas. I get that, but not everybody will do that, and then once we change it, that opens the door. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, thank you, uh, just a comment, uh, the exterior lighting standards is for commercial outdoor recreational uses, that's it, not, no other that's this portion of the code, that is what we're talking about. So when I think about that, I, I think this could benefit the hub. This could benefit any future ball fields that the city invest in, right? Playing games at a ball field past eleven o'clock is not unheard of. Uh, my granddaughter plays all over the western states and they play until all we hours of the night. So it, it, I, I, I would just encourage everybody to real, keep in mind, it's not just, we're not catering to Topgolf here. Um, this could be beneficial for many others within the community as well. Um, and then, uh, uh, I have one other thought, but I lost it, so there you have it.
Understand.
Yes, um, I think it would behoove us to ask, uh, or recommend to the applicant that they uh, in short order, find the, um, find the location or a couple of locations that they are highly considering, and then bring us back a location. Because we can't do guesswork and we can't, we can't say put it here versus put it there. Uh, they would have to let us know that, so one of their responsibilities now would be, although we're talking about lighting, tell us where they propose this, um, this project to go. Where are they wanting to put the project and submit that information to our attention? So that when we're considering, now we're considering the location, exact location, and of course, the lighting which we're here for.
Well, in, in answer to that, from my perspective, in essence, they've done that, although it's very, very broad based on zoning, correct? And so I, I get that, and I'm not sure, without some kind of letter of intent or whatever, that we're ever gonna be able to get them to narrow it down. I mean, I, that's, as, as much as I would like to see that, I'm not sure they'll be able to do that.
This area here. It does.
Commissioner, Commissioner Saulberg.
Uh, just with regard to the, the issues that were including in this zone change, the scope of the request again, is the amendment to the lighting, the lighting, regardless of where the location is, which I think we've got it narrowed down to within a couple of blocks where it is, is ten, less than ten percent of what the impact has been at Ridge Line. I appreciate Troy's hands-on, eyes-on with Boise, and I mean, that's gonna be a concern, but I've also heard them say that they're gonna have lighting experts that are gonna come in and do it, and it's still ninety percent less than what we already have. To Commissioner of Foye's point, I do think that it's not a matter of opening up a can of worms for everybody else, I think it's opening up opportunity for the kind of growth here that we, we are here to plan and manage. Our, it's not our job to do the voting on this, it'll be the city council that'll make their decision on this, and at the time that we have a city council meeting, if there are those concerns and citizens can come forward and, and discuss them, that's, that's their, that's the city council's job, not ours.
Any other comment?
Yeah, just, Commissioner Foye. Thank you, Tom, I was gonna just say that exact same thing, I'll just add one more thing. Um, I think before the end of this meeting, um, if I was standing over there, I would want some form of, it, what is the level of, uh, um, what is the level of future discussions with this body? To have, get into the more depth about what this code change really means, so. Um, I'm, for me, I'm hearing as a group, we're willing to talk more about this, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's
Okay. Not a, it's not a hard no, it's a, let's talk more about it and, and have some back and forth and and continue the discussion forward, uh, to go through the proper channels like this body does and it ends up at the council, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the planning department, as I'm trying to correlate the zone changes to the map and I'm challenged, let's put it that way, could you give us, uh, the zone map?
Yes.
It's actually online, i- if you
Could you give us the zone map and outline in dark these, uh, M one, these eligible areas?
Yes.
And could you also annotate which ones would, uh, the planning department deal with the ten acres? In other words, if, if it's something that's less than ten acres, maybe mark it in certain ways, so we're looking at just the stuff that's ten acres. So I like to see the area, I also like to see stuff that's less than ten acres.
Yeah.
Forget about it, or not forget about it, but understand what that is. Too many colors on that damn map.
Yes, we can put something together to help you kind of wrap your brain around what
Yeah.
where the impacts could be.
Yes, that's
Exactly.
I know.
Been there a long time.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you for being here.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Yes, sir, thanks for your time and your patience. Um, we'll move on now to citizen comments, do we have any citizens online first? Anyone, uh, other citizens, like, public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports, secretary's report, Amy, do you have that or?
I do, I have a couple of things for you guys, um, just a couple small updates. Um, we got our new, um, recreation coordinator person is now on board and they are working on getting our community event application, um, online. And so that process is moving forward, just to give you guys an update on some things that we did in previous sessions. We also have received, um, proposals for our sign code update, we put out a request for proposals and we received some. So hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have a better timeline for what that project will look like rolling forward. We, once Lisa gets back, we'll kind of debrief and, um, break the, the proposals and kind of talk about it, and then we'll have a better timeline for you guys.
Right.
Um, I also just wanted to note that we have moved your guys' mailboxes, so they're now up in the front office. So if you guys would like to get your packets early, if you just go to the front desk, whoever's staffing the front desk will be able to grab them and give you your mail.
Great. That's it, all right, we'll move on, planning commissioner reports, any reports, commissioners? None, seeing none, we, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, boo to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
I.
Post, thank you, thanks everyone, thank you. Good job.